Thank you councillors, I would now like to begin. Thank you, if you could take your seats. It's a bit late now, thank you. Councillor Luxwood when you're ready?
Yeah.
Thank you councillors, I would now like to begin. Thank you, if you could take your seats. It's a bit late now, thank you. Councillor Luxwood when you're ready? I now open the Extraordinary Council meeting on 6 September 2022 at 6:19pm. Good evening councillors, I will now read the prayer and the acknowledgement. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings on this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia, amen. The acknowledgement of country. I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidigal and Gadigal peoples who occupy the Sydney coast as being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to elders past and present and to Aboriginal people in attendance today. Apologies and granting of leaves of absence, do I have any apologies? Actually, you can all now be seated. Thank you. Do I have any apologies or leaves of absence? No, thank you. Requests to attend the meeting by audiovisual link. I have received a request from councillor Chapel and councillor Rosenfeld to attend by audiovisual link. I note councillor Hamilton does not require a motion as she's ill. Can I please have a mover and a seconder for, sorry, and councillor Pandefini to attend by audiovisual link? Link, can I have a mover please? Move councillor Burst, second to councillor D'Souza. Thank you. Declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests, councillors.
Yeah, basically, as I mentioned last week, in our team...
Sorry, I'm just gonna go around the horseshoe just to make it a little bit easy to make sure we've got everyone. We'll start with councillor Haye. I'd like to repeat the declarations I made last ordinary council meeting. Okay, thank you. Are there councillor Luxford? No. Yes councillor Luxford?
In relation to NR3/22, I'm a member of South Sydney Juniors. It's non-pecuniary interest there and I will be voting on the motion.
Thank you. Okay, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, do you have any declarations? Councillor D'Souza, I need you to turn your microphone off please. Thank you councillor Sid.
Non-pecuniary, non-significant, I am also NR3/22, I also am a member of Souths.
Okay, thank you councillor D'Souza. So councillor Burst, we'll go to councillor Burst. Councillor, oh sorry.
I've got a peculiar interest in NR3-22 and so will not be partaking in the vote on that.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I too am a member of the wonderful Souths Juniors but I will be voting on the matter and participating in the debate, thank you.
Thank you councillor D'Souza, councillor Rosenfeld?
Yep, okay, in NR2/22, I own a house in the R2 low-density residential zone, however, as it's my primary place of residence, it is a pecuniary interest but as it's my primary place of residence, I will debate and vote in the matter.
Thank you councillor Chapel? No, councillor Hamilton?
Non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in NR3/22 as I'm a member of Souths Juniors at the junction.
No worries, can I just confirm, is councillor Pandefini present?
I am, yep.
Do you have any declarations councillor Pandefini?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me Mr Mayor, no declaration.
Sorry councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen?
No declaration.
Councillor H? No, okay, there being, and myself, I have NR3/22, non-significant, non-pecuniary interest as I am the secretary of the Maruba branch of the ALP which periodically meets in the Juniors Maruba. Like all other community organisations including the Liberal Party of Australia, Probes Groups and local sporting associations, the branch meets without charge. I will be participating in the matter. I have sought further advice as it relates to the code of conduct, I've also been in receipt of correspondence outlining that all other groups meet without charge. In light of that advice, I do not believe that there is any conflict which would preclude me from participating in the debate, thank you very much. There being no further councillor declarations, I move to the addresses of council by members of the public. Chairperson's announcement in respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 520 to 523 of council's code of meeting practice. Audiovisual recordings of the meeting are prohibited without the express permission. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of council. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting will have a maximum of four minutes in which to put their case forward with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Questions may ask, councillors may ask questions of the presenter at the end of each public submission. Our first speaker is for this evening, speaking on NR22, notice of rescission motion submitted by councillor Burst, D'Souza and Sid. Randwick comprehensive LEP planning proposal, minimum lot size for subdivision and dual occupancy. Speaking for the rescission, Mr Anthony Betros.
Thank you, good evening Mayor, councillors, council staff. I've been working as a consultant planner in Randwick council for over twenty years and I support the rescission motion. I'm familiar with the character of the municipality, I speak both as a planner and a long-term resident of the council area. Been involved with the approval process for numerous semi-detached dwellings and can commend such lot sizes of 275 square metres as being capable of providing for good-sized living areas and usable outdoor spaces. The provision of 275 square metre lot sizes for dual occupancy post-subdivision would not alter the character of those areas, noting that semi-detached dwellings represent an established form of housing in many of these areas. Such lot sizes provide for appropriately designed and high levels of amenity for dwellings and these are evidenced by some of the high-quality housing outcomes achieved in the R3 zone, which don't have minimum lot sizes and provide for housing on similar lot sizes to that proposed of 275 square metres. Importantly, such lot sizes represent a more sustainable and efficient use of land, avoids pressure on land for increased densities in elsewhere in Randwick and assists in meeting housing targets in a low-density manner, particularly if some of the housing investigation areas are not supported. Now council planners have worked very hard over the last few years, they've completed an extensive analysis of the originally proposed lot size and I concur with their assessment and conclusions. There are lot sizes at Austral, near Liverpool, forty kilometres west of Randwick, that have 230 square metre lots. Surely with our new and growing infrastructure, lot sizes of 275 square metres can be supported in Randwick. I note in the last council report as well that there was a community survey which showed that sixty-three percent supported the lot sizes and twenty-nine percent were against. I'd just like to read a small portion of that council report if I have time. The reduction in minimum lot size in the R2 low-density residential zone will result the increase in semi-detached topology of dwellings in the Randwick LGA. In turn, this will increase housing diversity, affordability and choice for a range of household types such as families and couples to support the LGA's growing population, whilst allowing for a moderate increase that will protect the character of the R2 low-density residential zone. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions of the speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I now call the next speaker on the matter, NR3/22, notice of rescission motion submitted by councillors D'Souza, Rosenfeld and Sid. Randwick comprehensive LEP planning proposal rezoning requests, speaking in favour, Mr Keith McCroy.
Thank you Mr Mayor and councillors for allowing both myself and Mr Craig Kelly to speak here this evening. I'll be speaking a bit of an overview in relation to the Juniors Group of Clubs and what we are in the area and Mr Kelly ran our planning campaign for us in relation to the zoning of that site. My name's Keith McCroy, I'm the current chairman of the Juniors Group of Clubs, home to forty-five thousand members and almost three hundred staff. I'm also the current chairman of the South Sydney District Junior Rugby Football League, which comprises more than three thousand players, girls and boys, women and men. We are more than just a footy club, we're a community icon. Our support of the community via the Clubs Graham Soon, for example, reaches out to and includes our four surf clubs, South Maruba, Maruba, Coogee and Clovelly, Meals on Wheels, Salvation Army, the Delhi Women's Refuge, Wameric City's Senior Probes Groups, Randwick Netball Association, University of New South Wales Soccer Federation and in the Deep Swim School as well as the Little Heroes Swim School for Disabled Children. We take great pride in hosting Stedford's presentation and graduation ceremonies for all of our schoolkids throughout our city. Our club was founded in nineteen fifty-seven, which means our building's more than sixty-five years old. Our board of directors established a strategic planning committee whose task was to future-proof our club. The construction of the light rail and the subsequent loss of three hundred parking spaces crippled the club for a period of time. We successfully lobbied the then Transport Minister Andrew Constance and the Chair of the Geographical Naming Board, Norrell Underwood, to change the name of the terminus from Nine Ways Kingsford to the Juniors Kingsford. We engaged consultants to show that whilst we are currently operating under twelve thousand square metres of floor space, that we could efficiently do so with eight thousand square metres. Gaming revenue, councillors, is not going to be the income of the future, we're very much aware of that, we need to diversify. An example of our diversification has been the upper level of our fourth floor at the club, we've converted into office space which is currently being housed by the South Sydney Rabidose prior to their moving in to the Centre of Excellence down at Heffron Park. Councillors, in closing, Kingsford's our birthplace and will remain our home. The state government delivered a three billion dollar light rail terminus at our front door, along with that came changes to zoning limits, we have responsibly and legally taken advantage of those changes. In closing, we at the Juniors have never failed to respond, we're never called upon council to support those in need throughout our community. We see it as not only as council's responsibility but also as theirs, thank you. Any questions?
There's a hand up from councillor Haye, councillor Haye, question?
Thanks for coming tonight, Mr McCroy. With regards to the location of Souths Juniors and you provide a lot of services for the community, you've got various entertainment facilities, cheap meals, is it in the long-term goal of Souths Juniors to ever move from its current site?
No it's not, no it's not.
Thank you, I have a hand up from councillor Burst, then I see councillor Chapel and then councillor D'Souza.
Thanks Keith for coming to talk to us. How many junior kids does Souths Juniors actually help? How many thousands if you could...
More than three thousand, our charter is to provide those kids and many of them disadvantaged, we provide their shorts, socks, jumpers, we pay the rent for the grounds and the lighting of those grounds, which councillor, might add, helped us out during a tough period of time with the light rail. We insure them, we accredit their coaches, we extend grants to the clubs to support what they do, to the tune of approximately one point six, one point eight million dollars.
That's excellent, thank you Keith.
Thank you.
There is a hand up from councillor Chapel, then I'll go to councillor D'Souza and councillor H.
Thank you and thank you for coming tonight to speak to us, we really appreciate you taking the time. I'd like to ask, you spoke briefly about poker machine revenue, could you give us an idea of the annual revenue that your machines take? And I'd also be really interested to hear you talking about diversifying, are you proposing giving up some of the licences of those machines to lower the impact on the community and have a more positive influence on what's happening here?
Our revenue would be in the vicinity of thirty-five million dollars a year and we've taken, we've had five hundred and eleven poker machine entitlements at Kingsford and of those, we've taken a hundred and sixty off the floor already.
Sorry, and can I just clarify when they were taken on the floor, taken off the floor, because the last I saw was that in twenty nineteen you added another thirty-five?
No, no, we've five hundred and eleven, I think, I've got our CEO here, he'd know the number exactly, but it's in the vicinity of one hundred and sixty machines have been parked, they're not on, they're no longer on the floor.
So is that from the five hundred and eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so will you be selling the licences for those?
We haven't discussed that at this stage, I don't think there'd be too many that would be buying them to be quite honest, I think we're all of the opinion that the world is changing, that's why I mentioned in relation to the diversification and what we need to do moving forward to continue doing what we have done for the past sixty-odd years into the future.
Don't you pay an annual cost for each machine though, so I'm not sure why you would hold on to them if you're not using them?
Well, like I said, it'd be a matter of who would want to buy them, we have amalgamated with two clubs already that would have been sitting as townhouses now in Maruba RSL and Mullab RSL. By amalgamating with those two clubs, we maintain the traditions of our return men and women and there may be other opportunities that will arise in relation to, there's many clubs in this part of the world and throughout where they're dying and for many people, the clubs are their only outlet that they've got.
Are they currently twenty-four hours, those machines?
No, no they're not, we're not a casino.
Could you give me an idea of the hours please?
Mr Mayor, this is unnecessary questioning, please. We're talking, yeah, what are we doing, this is not the way things are done.
We're open from nine AM to six AM.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, just on the point of order, I will remind us that we do have the LEP and it is broadly related to planning considerations, but I believe that councillor Chapel has completed her questions, is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you, I'll now go to councillor D'Souza.
Keith, thank you, thank you for being here, I must say how impressed I was at the red and green ball, the respect UN organisations showed towards our Indigenous people in particular and the acknowledgement of country. Of course Matt Daw and Ali Barbera were there and they did a great job, but Keith, you talked about all those wonderful groups you help and all the, I could have missed it, but I didn't hear that much about South Save or South Cares, I often say South Save, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Well Noel, South Cares is an arm of the Rabidose, an extension of the Rabidose that works throughout the community, not just in our part of the world and in our part of the world we do have quite an Indigenous population, particularly around the Waterloo, Redfern, Alexandria area and of course out here at La Perouse. But South Cares also dig deep into the wider community and right throughout the state, that is the charity arm of the Rabidose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor H.
Thank you and thank you very much for coming in. Given that we are discussing the LEP, would you be able to share your thoughts on what the extra twenty metres will be used for, like what your plans are and, you know, roughly speaking? And whether you will be looking at installing additional poker machines?
Well, as I said, as I said, we can operate under less floor space, you know, the upper floors could be anything from hotel to student accommodation, the opportunities are boundless and what could be, what could be done. To be honest councillor, I don't think I'm going to see too much in my lifetime, but as I said, the role of this planning committee that we've got is for the longevity of this club, we've been there for sixty-five years and we intend to be there for another sixty-five years.
Thank you councillor Sid.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I just wanted to bring it back to being about an LEP. Mr McCroy, with the planning that you've put together, is it all about taking advantage of the light rail station, the place that it is, bringing Kingsford, you've got student accommodation across the road, there's a build across throughout the K2K, so it's taking advantage of, so it won't just be as taking advantage of the club, is there anything else that might go in there, shops, a bit of an arcade, community rooms, etc.
Well, worse have been in touch with us councillor Sid, there'd be many, many parties interested in that particular site, we haven't really... interested in that particular site, we haven't really got a supermarket there, it's limitless, what could be done on that site, and we'd be open, obviously, our board would be open to whatever opportunities would present.
Thank you very much, there being no further questions of the speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I now call the next speaker in favour, Mister Craig Kelly.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd like to commence by saying to all the councillors that this is a really good plan, this rezoning, and all of you should vote for it, in particular, including the Greens. If the rezoning proceeds, there will be three important outcomes. Firstly, all of the planning objectives of the K2K rezoning will be realised on the South Juniors site. Secondly, everybody involved in the process will win, and finally, there will be no losers of any kind, there's no adverse impacts from this rezoning. If it doesn't proceed, the existing controls on the site will not work, and the site won't be redeveloped, so none of the K2K objectives will be realised. When it began, the K2K rezoning had two important drivers, firstly, to increase housing densities, and in particular, the highest densities were to be within one hundred metres of the light rail stations. And secondly, the second driver was a desire to liven up the town centres and ensure that they became or continued to be places that people liked to spend time and money in. As you know, the K2K methodology was an intensive site-by-site analysis of all of the significant sites in the town centres, to carefully design the exact parameters on a site-by-site basis of what could be redeveloped. This involved a huge amount of work by the council's planning department over a very long period of time. In a precinct-wide exercise of that nature, it is not surprising that errors would be made in some of the work that the council carried out. In the case of the Juniors site, it is the case that an error has been made, the FSR controls will not work. The existing FSR control is four to one, but it's impossible to design a building under the existing controls, which will exceed about three to one. Whenever you encounter a control as important as an FSR control, which can't be achieved, you know that there is something wrong with the way that that control came into existence. The existing South Juniors building has an FSR of about four to one, meaning that there's no incentive to demolish it and redevelop it, and merely to produce a building that is very substantially smaller than it. However, if the rezoning proceeds, as I said, all of the K2K objectives will be achieved. I think it's important to bear in mind, in relation to the K2K objectives, that they are truly ambitious and beneficial. Any redevelopment site which achieves all of those objectives will make a major positive contribution to the Kingsford or Kensington town centres. In the case of the South Juniors site, if the rezoning proposal is approved, it will enable a redevelopment design which achieves all of the K2K planning objectives. There's a lot of ways to define those objectives, but for today's purposes, I have distilled them into ten points, which I intended to read, but I'm mindful of the time, so I'll just briefly, if I may, Mister Chairman, cover the most important ones of those. Firstly, and most importantly, as a matter of land economics, it will enable a design which is sufficiently valuable to make it financially viable to develop the site, that is, to redevelop the site. If that were not the case, the rezoning would be pointless, because it will not achieve any of the intended planning benefits. Secondly, the design will achieve the intended four to one FSR, and by that means, increase the number of dwellings which will be immediately adjacent to pedestrian entrance to the light rail station. This will mean more people will enjoy convenient transport options and support the operation of the light rail and its related public transport options. More residents will add to the vitality, activity and vibrancy of the Kingsford Town Centre. Thirdly, the additional height of the eighteen-storey tower will provide diverse apartment living with higher amenities such as cross ventilation, better outlooks and better solar access. The eighteen-storey tower at the northern end of the site that is proposed is, as you're probably aware, the same height that's achievable on the council's own site, which has been rezoned in the K2K at One Rainbow Street, and also the Scape site at three ninety-one Anzac Parade. Fourthly, the design will capitalise on the shape of the site to create a signature architectural response and placemaking feature comparable to the Flatiron Building in New York. Sixthly, the design will improve the permeability of the site by creating better configured pedestrian links through the site. This means that the existing monolithic four and five-storey club building will be replaced with a three-building design, which will have more explicit separation between the higher elements, and which will break down the long length of the DCP podium envelope. This will improve the pedestrian experience for people walking between the light rail station and Wallace Street, or places to the south and east of Wallace Street. And finally, the contributions to community infrastructure and affordable housing under clauses six point seventeen and six point eighteen of the LEP will be maximised. As I said, if all of these things occur, everybody wins. The state government wins by achieving its housing targets in Randwick, the local residents in Kingsford win because they'll have a more desirable, a more usable and attractive building on the site, residents elsewhere in Randwick will win because they will not have to accommodate high-density residential zonings to achieve the housing targets on sites which may lead to adverse impacts, or at least less desirable impacts than on the South Juniors site. The forty-five thousand members of the South Juniors Club will win, because the club's balance sheet will be strengthened. And finally, Randwick Council will win by reason of all of the outcomes which I've listed. And I should mention again, and there will be no losers as a result of this rezoning. So for all these reasons, I say to you councillors, and particularly the Greens, you should do everything to support this plan, and you should vote for this rescission motion. Thank you.
Thank you, I have seen a hand up from councillor Chapel, then councillor Hay, were there any other hands up? No, councillor Chapel.
Thank you, and thank you for speaking with us today. I just want to ask, it seems there's a plan to develop this site for private housing as well as maintaining the existing club, could you just speak about that a little bit more, please?
The K2K rezoning has zoned this thing neighbourhood business. Any plans for redevelopment of the site will be simply to comply with that zoning. I imagine that there will be residential apartment buildings on, in the three towers, the, both frontages need to have some activation, and we need to fit the club in there somewhere as well, that's as far as our thinking with this building has got at this stage.
I saw a hand up from councillor Hay, then I'll go to councillor...
I might add, I think in relation to councillor Beach's question, there is absolutely no possibility that there will be gambling activities in any of the towers, or in the additional stories that we're proposing be erected on the northern end of the site.
Thank you. Councillor Hay.
I'd like to ask you, if I may, about the proposed, sorry, Mister McCall mentioned a supermarket, is that a possible or likely outcome at this stage of your planning?
We're in the very early stages of discussions with Woolworths, and if you ask Woolworths, they would give you a much more positive answer than I will. I've done mixed developments, including acting for and against Woolworths in the past. All I can honestly tell you is that we are in active discussions with them, and I'm expecting to receive some kind of concept from them within the next month or six weeks.
Secondly, how many parking spaces are currently on the site, and how many parking spaces would you foresee putting into the new building?
I expect, again, that, we haven't got a floor plate sorted for the basements, but I expect two hundred, if I had to name a number for you.
Thank you, councillor Beach.
Thank you very much for coming in. So part of the revised plans will see the height of the Juniors going up to fifty-one metres, that's what's here in the business policy.
Yes. That's assuming we can provide design excellence.
The approved height of the Kingsford South HIAs for the residential component is sixteen metres. Can you explain, or sixteen point five metres to be exact, can you explain how you propose to address the issue of the relationship of your building design at fifty-one metres to a local residential area which will only be sixteen metres?
The height of that tower, as I mentioned, is precisely the same as the tower on the council's property, or the permitted tower on the council's property, and on the Scape property on the other side of Anzac Parade. Our proposal involves a tower which, from a solar access or overshadowing point of view, has no impact on residential areas, the...
Sorry, councillor Beach, councillor Beach, I will allow the speaker to complete his answer, if you'd like to ask a follow-up, you're more than welcome.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I'd appreciate it if councillor Beach could finish that clarification.
Councillor Beach.
I'm sorry, what is it that you don't believe?
I believe the approved height of the corner building is twenty-four metres. Twenty-four storeys.
I honestly can't tell you what the approved height of the northern building is, but I can tell you that it's approved for nine storeys, and it will be able to be taken to sixteen storeys plus two storeys higher with design excellence if this proposal is approved. And that is precisely the same as the controls on the council's site and on the Scape site.
But just with respect, that site was not included in the original K2K proposal, this came in as a rezoning proposal, the reason it wasn't included.
Point of order.
Councillor Hamilton, I will hear your point of order.
Councillor Beach is debating with the speaker, and even began her counter with respect, which means that she is posing an argument, and he's not an expert, and he's answering questions in relation to his property, and that's where it should be kept.
What I would do is I would caution councillor Beach for engaging in debate, but I do accept that there are factual questions which are contained within it, and I'll just offer a general reminder, not necessarily as to the content of it, that all questions should be of a factual nature.
I did ask a very clear and specific question at the outset, which was how the new proposal for fifty-one metres would relate to the HIAs, you know, at the new approved height of sixteen point five metres, and that was a very specific, clear, unequivocal question, and I'm just hoping to receive an answer to that.
Okay. Well, it's, that's a question of urban design, I'm not an urban designer, but if I could offer the point of view that, at the moment, there's a four-to-five-storey monolithic building that presents itself to the residents of the proposed HIO in Wallace Street and beyond. If the existing controls were to be used, we would have a large squat building with a very large podium running the entire length of Wallace Street, except for the cross-throughside links. It is very difficult to get those throughside links to operate on this site, given that there's a fall of one level from Wallace Street down into Anzac Parade, so it's more likely that those things will be covered, those links will be covered rather than open to the sky. What the rezoning proposal is intended to allow is by reducing the footprint and making the northern tower taller, there will be more room on the ground level of the building, so that there can be greater separation of those three tall elements. The throughside link in the middle of the site will be much more like an open, like a public road, that there will actually be some views opened during, through that link to Wallace Street that aren't there at present, and the overall massing and scale of the development will be, in my opinion, very substantially improved from what is possible under the existing controls.
Councillor Beach, yes?
Thanks for that. It sounds like the plans are, you know, fairly far down the track in terms of their conceptualisation. Are you able to share when the public might be made aware, or council might be, you know, when these might be going on exhibition, or sort of the concept plans shared with the public?
No, I'm afraid that's not correct, councillor Beach. Our plans are nowhere near very far down the track. What we've done is spent something like a quarter of a million dollars proving up schemes to comply with the K2K controls, and finding this problem that I've aired with you tonight, and that is set out in the documents that have been lodged with the council for many months, and then to prove up a scheme which achieved the K2K objectives in the optimum fashion. The optimum fashion that we put is that the K2K rezoning set out to rezone to the highest level, all of the buildings within a hundred metres of the rail stations. Our site is the only site, only relevant site, in the K2K rezoning that does not have those eighteen or higher level rezonings. And there's no planning justification for that omission. There has never been in any documentation, or in any of the debate about the K2K rezoning, why the Juniors site fell out of the strategic node site treatment in the K2K rezoning, and there is no reason why it should not be treated just as the council's site has been treated. It's directly across the road from the railway station.
So councillor Beach, sorry, the speaker is completing his answer, thank you.
I've finished, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, just prior to we continuing with questions, I actually have a question, excuse me for just the opposite nature of it, I'm through the relevant officer, just as there has been some various assertions as to the respective heights of the accompanying HIA as well as the surrounding node sites, could I just throw to the relevant officer to clarify for the councillors to what the height controls are on the HIA sites and the surrounding node sites of K2K as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The proposed HIA areas have a maximum six-storey height, so that's all the land around the South Juniors site, which is along Willis Street and Rainbow Street. The Kingsford and Kensington planning proposal had the two node sites at the corner of Rainbow and Bunron Road, and the other node sites were in Kingsford, the centre of Kingsford, and also the Todman intersection in Kensington, and those sites were part of the K2K planning proposal, where higher heights and FSRs were applicable to those node sites.
I now have a hand up from councillor Sid, then councillor De Souza.
Actually, Mister Mayor, I was about to ask the same question to the relevant officer, because I think it fits in with Mister Kelly, that Scape is seventeen storeys, I'm going by memory, the Rainbow Street site seventeen storeys, and that is part of still K2K, and that's why they're, and I'll put this question to you, is that the reason why you've moved it forward higher on the northern side, so it fits in with Scape, with Scape across the road, and also with the Rainbow Street, with that area, I'm sure it's allowable to be seventeen storeys, if not seventeen, it'd be fifteen, but it's around that. So this is in keeping, I'll put the question to the relevant officer, it's in keeping with that, three nodes that are exactly there, and that's, and then, I'll put it to Mister Kelly, that is the reason why you've gone higher on the north... northern, so it fits in with that, and there's less shadow for the people who live along, I think it's Waller Street at the back there, in the south Kingsford. Is that pretty much correct?
That's absolutely correct. Plus, if our urban designer was here from AJC, he'd be telling you about the consistency of the streetscape with the three towers being the bookend of the station, the proposed flat iron building, as we call it, on the Juniors site, taking advantage of a few corridors into Kingsford Town Centre and the twist in Anzac Parade that occurs just there. But what you say is exactly part of the justification for this scheme. It also, if we make the tower slender and higher, it means that there will be a plaza on the northern end of the building that will make circulation of pedestrians from the train station to the Juniors site and to the council's site on the other side of Waller Street, much more commodious and much safer.
Two follow-up questions, Mr. Mayor. The next one is, obviously, you've asked for council, you've been speaking to council officers about the rezoning, and they've actually recommended to your rezoning, and they've actually put it in here, so it's nothing out of the blue, it's actually agreed to by our council officers, they've approved it, and they've obviously put it in for exhibition, so they never had any problems with it?
It would be fair to say that when I first met with council staff, they were very negative about this proposition, not improperly so, they simply had done a great deal of work and they didn't believe there was an error in it. So, we, as I said, spent a lot of money, and we used the best designers and planners in the state to workshop the thing and to justify the position that we put. The behaviour of the council's planning staff in relation to this work, in my view, has been absolutely exemplary, and they were critical of the work in various respects, but at no time when we completed the work did they have any concerns that they thought hadn't been addressed by what we put to the council.
And my last question is that, as you know, this has been on exhibition and public consultation, and I note there's no submissions against it in our paperwork, I'm just wondering with you if anyone...
There is a...
A point of order, that's not correct.
There is one submission...
There's no submissions for this, in written submissions against this in the business paper?
Yes, there is, I'm afraid, Danny. I'm sorry, in the Director of City Planning's report in the business papers, he does mention...
There's no written submission?
Sorry, Counselor Sedd.
That's correct.
Counselor Sedd, the speaker actually does need to answer the question. Thank you.
That is correct. There is, in the report of the Director of City Planning, there's mention of one objection on height, and that's been considered, and no further weight has been given to it in the report, and the report has recommended that this rezoning proposal be approved. I don't know who that objector is, I haven't seen the objection. I assume that it's a person in Waller Street who, faced with the proposition of whether the building goes up or down, objects to its height, that person's entitled to it. However, I don't think people in the room understand how difficult it is to present this reasoning in a four-minute address, so I didn't deal with a whole lot of these things, but what I put to you tonight is that we're not defining the objectives, the K2K rezoning is defining the planning objectives, and merely because there's an inexplicable failure to rezone to the highest level, one of the closest buildings in the entire town centre rezoning to the highest tower heights, is simply an inexplicable error, or at least an error that hasn't been explained to us, and there is no reason, if you accept the council's view of what the objective should be, that is, that the sites within 100 metres of the train stations ought to go to the highest densities because of the conventional, universally acknowledged planning proposition that the new houses and dwellings ought to go where the transport infrastructure is. If you accept that, then the fact that a person in Waller Street who's going to have their outlook enhanced by various buildings on this site, and a slender tower on the northern end of the site, the same as the tower on the council's site and on the scape site, is a matter that needs to be taken into account, like every objection or submission that's made to the council, but the fact is that it's not, it's not, it's not an objection that ought to be given great weight. The public benefit in the scale and urban design that the K2K has mandated is what ought to take precedence. So, what I'm suggesting to you is that whilst that submission needs to be considered, as it has been, it ought to be dismissed, just as the planning staff have dismissed it.
Can I just seek a point of clarification, please?
Yes, Counselor Chappell.
Just, the speaker has spoken about the K2K heights as being mandated. My understanding was they were just limits, rather than things that had to be compulsorily achieved. Is that, can that relevant officer give some guidance?
That's absolutely right. There are FSR controls, and FSR controls are universally expressed as maximums. However, every land economist's study of any planning instrument that has ever occurred treats those FSR controls as maximums, and the fact is that in land development in New South Wales and throughout Australia, they are in fact treated as the maximum FSR that developers will seek to achieve, and they generally ensure that the, whatever other controls there are, are complied with in a fashion which achieves the maximum FSR. The planners that do the strategic planning work all contemplate that that is how the incentive process that underlies rezoning, that is, the one that I spoke of earlier, the incentive process that underlies rezoning means that if it is not financially or economically viable, the rezonings won't occur. You've got to make it more desirable to turn the buildings over, and so the people that worked on the K2K work spent their time working out if they produced an increase in height of two levels, would that be sufficient to turn that building over in a reasonable timeframe, or wouldn't it? And as I've made clear tonight, in relation to the Souths Juniors site, no developer will take it on because it'll lose money. So, you're technically correct, Counselor Chappell, to refer to them as maximums, but the pragmatic reality is that in every planning control, they should be regarded as the entitlement that every landowner will attempt to pursue. If they can't comply with other controls, then they can't have it, sure, but if there's a huge gap between what they can achieve and what the maximum control is, then the land economist that looked at that plan before it was made has made an error of judgment.
Thank you. I'll now go to Counselor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kelly, the impression I get is you're just asking for a fair go. You want exactly what your neighbours have been granted, you want the same opportunity, am I right?
Yes, that puts it in a nutshell, really.
Yes, that's all you're asking for. And I have a secondary question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kelly, you talked about win, 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 and went 10 times, I'm sure. The gong went win, win, win. This will be a great victory, I know, becomes a matter of opinion, and I've seen it firsthand, and your statements are evidence-based. This would be a great win for the community, especially with the supermarket that Kingsford has been looking for for a very long time, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would be a major lost opportunity if this rezoning does not proceed.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, thank you very much. No further questions, thank you very much. Mr. Kelly. The public component of the meeting now being concluded, we move to NR2/22 Notice of Precision Motion submitted by Counselors Burst, D'Souza, and Sedd, Ramick Comprehensive LEP Planning Proposal, Minimum Lot Size for Subdivision and Dual Occupancy. Counselor Burst, or, what I will do is I'll go to Counselor Burst, and then Counselor Sedd as that moves to the decision, and then Counselor Burst.
Thank you. When we look at the LEP and this component, which was CP45-22 on dual occupancies, the exhibited plan by our council that was, a lot of thought was put into, and the submissions we received back effectively set a new watermark for replies from the community. The community are very much interested in this issue, and very passionate about the issue. As councillors, I think it's important that we support our community. The positive outcomes that we've seen so far from subdevelopments across South Ward and the whole of Ramick have been positive, and this is an opportunity for us to effectively support our community, listen to our community, and move ahead in a positive way. I don't think the request to have 550 is outrageous. I would rather that our council control our DAs, rather than people be able to go to state and to the environment and get developments done through a CDC process, which means they can do a lot size of 450. As councillors, we were elected to take responsibility, take ownership, show leadership, and make decisions, so here is an opportunity for us to make a bold decision to move forward with 550, which was also endorsed by the council staff, and so I say please support the people that have worked hard, that have had their properties for maybe 20 or 30 years, now want to have their children living next door to them. So, why wouldn't we subdivide and allow them to live next to their mums and dads, they can help them? And this also will help, house prices will actually take pressure and a burden off the cost of living, and everybody complains about house prices going up. This is an opportunity also to keep that under control. So, I think we should move forward with the original recommendation from council at 550, and I look forward for the support from my fellow councillors. Thank you.
Counselor Sedd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I am supporting this precision motion, and in this, if this precision motion wins, then I will move the motion that we go back to CP46/22 as recommended in the business paper, which is 550 square metres. As I expressed last week, 600 square metre lots would adversely affect hundreds of people that live in the South Ward, and also would not meet the strategic plan's aims. 550 square metres was decided by our expert planners, strategic planners, and I quote from page 155 of the business plan, "An analysis concluded that a lot size of 550 square metres is the most appropriate lot size for dual occupancies in Ramick City. Consideration has been given to allow adequate landscaping, deep soil planting, permeable surfaces, private open space, and vehicle access requirements. 550 also allows current One title and Strata titles to be separated into separate titles", which also affects a lot of the people in the South Ward in a positive way. "The results of the telephone survey and public consultation was comprehensively in support of 550 metres squared. 63% of the written submissions were in support, 67% of the telephone survey said dual occupancies provide important housing options for families. A petition in support of the LEP, in positive support of the LEP, with 305 signatures, was only counted as one. Five speakers on the night last week were all in support. 61.7% of these lots of dual occupancies are in the South Ward, and councillors in voting for the 600 square metre lot sizes would be ignoring our strategic planners, community consultation, speakers last week, telephone survey, and to deny South Ward families the opportunity to remain within their LGA, based on, and I quote, "A councillor who said the larger size would allow her daughters to play in a bigger backyard."
Thank you. I have a hand up from Counselor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, basically, on top of what I said last week, I think the most important issue here is that there is, we have a housing affordability crisis, as we well know. The best way to tackle the housing affordability crisis is to increase supply, and it's critical that 550 is supported and put in place in order to increase and have long-term solutions to the housing affordability crisis. I know at the moment there's interest rate rises and the like, but we need long-term solutions, that's short-term, really long-term solutions, and it's critical that we increase supply, that's, you know, all levels of government need to look at that.
Thank you. I have a hand up from Counselor D'Souza, then I'll go to Counselor Pandefini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming here tonight, councillors, I have no hidden agenda. I'm fighting for the future of many residents of Ramick City. Losing their future is not like losing an election or a few points in the stock market. I am here to speak for all the generations to come and to protect their future. I'm here to speak for those residents around the Ramick local government area, whose cries have gone unheard for many years, to bring the minimum lot size to 550 square metres. Mine is a community agenda, not a political agenda. I want those families to live in our area, I want to keep families together, I want to strengthen that sense of community that we're so proud of in Ramick City. Councillors, we're dealing with real people and real lives, and we have an opportunity to make a big difference to our residents' lives. Councillors, friends, in these unprecedented times, let's give the people hope, a chance, and protect those who have already purchased but cannot sell or refinance their homes, or those families who want the opportunity to live in our area, yes, to live in our area, and want to be close to their families. Let us tonight follow the guidance of our officers. Let's follow the report and bring minimum lot size down to 550 square metres. This will not lead to overdevelopment or catastrophic crew removal, but it'll give people hope where there is now despair, harmony where there is now discord. We also, we must remind ourselves, have legislation and protections in place to prevent overdevelopment and tree replacement programmes in place as we decrease our carbon footprint, as we race to zero emissions by 2050. Local people want to live in our area, they want to live in Ramick City, and by decreasing minimum lot size to 550 square metres, we will make it possible and allow families to stay together, give them hope, and keep the Australian dream to own your own home with a backyard and a green lawn possible and affordable. So many people want to be able to buy a house, upgrade from a unit into their own family home, but homes not built out of bricks and mortar, but with love and memories, lots of love and memories. When I was growing up, I grew up in an Australian that gave everyone a fair go, that's what I talked about before, where the Australian dream, as I said, was to own your own home with a lawn and a backyard. I hope at tonight's council meeting we can all look after our residents and maintain low-density living... low-density living and keep families together. We need to keep control of our planning instruments and not force the minister to intervene because he can see the inequity that exists in the Ramick planning controls if this wasn't asked. Bayside Council has a minimum lot size of three hundred and fifty square metres. Wallara has minimum lot size of two hundred and thirty square metres in low-density residential areas like Paddington. These are two adjacent councils. We all want to stop the concrete jungles and overdevelopment from taking over our area, but not at the cost of our suffering local residents who want to continue to live in Ramick City. We need to do this, Mr Mayor, in a measured way where there is a win-win for the community and the environment. I hope we all support that minimum lot size should be five hundred and fifty square metres. Thank you.
I have a hand up from councillor Pandefini.
Yeah, I just want to be super brief and say that what struck me with the submissions and the people that spoke was not a lot of families, but in fact a lot of property developers. But I appreciate the sentiment that there is the need and the wish from councillors for affordable housing and I hope that that continues, especially through the ten percent affordable housing and that that becomes more ambitious if that is truly what councillors really want. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Olive.
Yes, I just wanted to say that there was, as I pointed out last time, a particular question from the community survey, which indicated that the idea of two hundred and seventy-five square metre lots, the community was more equivocal about that than in expressions of this question in other terms. And I think that, you know, sort of the existing dual occupancy that you can place on four hundred and fifty square metres, increasing that to five hundred to six hundred square metres or five hundred and fifty, as the case may be, is one thing. But when you're able to, you know, have have the difference between that being stratted and having two properties of two hundred and seventy-five square metres that are Torrance titles, I think there's a huge gap in the in terms of the value of that. And I think that what this is going to herald is a rapid increase in development of two hundred and seventy-five metre square metre lots that will be, you know, sort of subdivided five hundred and fifty, but there will be a rapid increase in development. And my concern is that this increase will be of an inconvenience in a lot of areas. There'll be a lot of development going on and I think the community will feel a bit of the backlash of that and that's my concern. So I think that if it was if we have a six hundred square metre, three hundred or, you know, sort of three hundred square metres that are allowed to be through subdivision, then that will slow the process and will be of less inconvenience to the community. And so that's why I'm supporting six hundred square metres for dual occupancy and three hundred square metres for the subdivisions.
Thank you. There being councillor Nielsen. Councillor Olive, thank you.
Just a question, a procedural question. Are we debating whether or not the rescission motion is to be put?
Yes, thank you. Yes. Are there any further speakers? There's councillor Burst or you can close the debate.
Before I close the debate, I think there's one thing we've forgotten here as well. It's called a thing called BASIC, which is the Building Sustainability Index. So by having these developments at five fifty, we are making Ramick City Council greener because what happens now is that every one of those new developments will be using sustainable materials. We'll now be using new standards where the old houses had four-millimetre glass, where they weren't heating properly, they weren't cooling properly. So now our properties become more efficient, so they are more environmentally friendly. So actually, we're creating a greener Ramick City Council if we go to this five fifty-fifty because there'll be more properties that will now be sustainable and green. So I would just on the end of that, I'd like to close the debate.
Thank you. I'll now go straight to a division.
The vote is to put the rescission motion.
Yes, to put the rescission motion. So. Yes, so we are voting on the rescission motion. Debate, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so I'll now go to councillor Hamilton in relation to putting the rescission.
For.
Councillor Pandefini.
Against.
Councillor Nielsen.
For.
Councillor Beach. Councillor Nielsen, could you please turn off your microphone? Thank you. Councillor Beach.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Hay.
For.
Councillor, councillor Luxford.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Against.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
For.
Councillor Olive.
Against.
Councillor McCafferty. Councillor Wilson.
For.
Councillor Sedd.
For.
Councillor Burst.
For.
Councillor D'Souza.
For.
And the mayor is against. I declare that carried. Okay, the motion is now rescinded. Councillor. Sedd, thank you.
I'll second.
Moved councillor Sedd, seconded councillor D'Souza. Councillor Sedd, could you outline what it is that you're moving?
Oh, sorry.
So, Mr Mayor, as I said before, I'm moving the recommendation as per CP forty-six slash twenty-two. We've debated it, so I think we'll just if it's an agreement with the second, we'll just put it.
Thank you, Mr Seconder. Okay, there being no further speakers. Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. Okay, councillor Hamilton.
For.
Councillor Pandefini.
Against.
Councillor Nielsen.
For.
Councillor Beach.
Against.
Councillor Hay.
For.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Chapel.
Against.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
For.
Councillor Olive.
Against.
Councillor McCafferty. Councillor Wilson. Councillor Sedd.
For.
Councillor Burst.
For.
Councillor D'Souza.
For.
And the mayor is against. I declare that carried. Thank you. The motion now carried. We now move to the next item of business. NR three slash twenty-two notice of motion submitted from councillor D'Souza, Rosenfeld and Sedd. If the rescission, okay, thank you. The movement of the rescission, okay, so councillor Burst is now leaving room. Thank you. Councillor D'Souza.
Reserve my right, Mr Mayor. I just moved the rescission.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sedd.
I just wanted to reiterate, Mr Mayor, that there was a public consultation, there was no response to this. The juniors have acted in good faith and have spoken to our council officers. This is actually planned with K2K as we've heard before. It could be actually a very unique and exciting part of Kingsford in addition to Kingsford. It's got the light rail right there. It's a sort of no-brainer that it's a welcome addition to what is at Kingsford at the moment. So I put this to everyone that we put it back in as for rezoning and they can still discuss with our council officers the appropriate build.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Pandefini. Is that still the case?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Beach.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will not be supporting this rescission motion. As many of the councillors here will know, I vehemently oppose the K2K development, seeing as seeing them those plans as a gross overdevelopment of the Anzac Parade alignment. It's interesting that South Ward councillors who are moving this rescission motion and who perhaps don't have quite as detailed an understanding of the heights and the densities that were being proposed for K2K. So previously, prior to K2K, the twenty-twelve LEP, the height, the allowable heights along that alignment were twenty-four metres. Most of the K2K was rezoned at thirty-one, including the Junior's site. So they actually went up, already were given an increase from twenty-four to thirty-one metres. It's not like they were left out. They were granted an increase. Now, some of the main opposition, and I really would ask the councillors who are moving this rescission motion to listen to me as the ward councillor and do me that justice and the residents of West Ward, that respect. What was proposed were in addition to those thirty-one metres were four nodes in the Kensington area and five nodes in the Kingsford area that were to be around fifty-one and fifty-four metres. Fifty-four metres was up in Kensington, fifty-one metres was down in Kingsford. The reason that the juniors was never included in the original K2K was the idea was that those high, those increased heights were confined to particular nodes. It was whether you agreed with it or not, it was planned in a very particular way. Two two high spots there at the nine ways, then three spots up on the corner of Strom and Anzac and then the four additional spots up on the corner of Anzac and Todman. And I remember councillor Luxford saying, if we get those extra heights, what is going to stop other developers coming and asking for those heights further down the track? And that was dismissed, but here we are tonight, voting for that very thing. We are proposing an additional node, fifty-one metre node, in addition to the others that are already included within the K2K. Councillors, this was not in the original K2K for a particular reason. The HIAs which got passed at the last meeting are sixteen point five metres. You've got fifty-one metres, they are all, all those fifty-one metre heights are in the business zones or in the new E2 zones. This is going to be right budding up against a residential zone of only sixteen point five metres. I don't care that it's near the light rail station. The idea of the light rail station was to support more residential development, not more commercial development. So if you pass this tonight, there will be other developers coming and knocking on our door. And what argument are you going to use? Because the whole of Anzac Parade is along a light rail alignment. There's light rail stops all along Anzac Parade. So what is going to, if you're using that argument for the Kingsford light rail station, you know, for the Junior's light rail station, the whole area is near a light rail station. So it's a specious argument. And I can tell you, if we're going to have dozens of other proposals lining up at the landed environment court, and this will be the justification. They have rezoned this particular site, why can't we have ours? So please think about it tonight. Please think that if this was not the particular group that is coming here arguing tonight, please think of this as just any developer. If this was anyone else, would you be granting this? I know there's a huge love for this club in this community. I don't argue against that, you know, I'm not arguing against that, but this is different. This is not to do with whether you love a particular club or not.
Point of order. Councillor Beach has gone over five minutes.
Sir, just hold on. I do have a point of order. I have to hear the point of order. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Mr Mayor, councillor Beach has gone over five minutes.
Look, I do believe that to be the case. I'll ask councillor Beach just to close her remarks.
I'm happy to close it, but please bear in mind, any increase in height, this is an additional fifty-one metre node that was never included in the original plans. Please be aware of the intense pressure on West Ward, on the Anzac Parade alignment and what this is actually going to mean for the residents of West Ward who are emailing the West Ward councillors every single week and wait till these things start going up. It's going to be a nightmare.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza, then I'll go to councillor Hay. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When we talked about the postal service in the old days, we'd say, it just doesn't deliver mail. It offers, also offers hope and promise. That's exactly what this project does. It offers hope and promise to our community, yes. We can make a decision on emotions and we know about Souths cares and we know about all the community investment this club does and the opportunities besides the employment opportunities, the many opportunities it offers our community. But this argument that was presented by Mr Kelly and Mr McCraw, but Mr Kelly in particular, was evidence-based. When he went, when the club was offered or put forward their views and there was little opportunity for acceptance, they went and did their homework. They went and consulted. I was the mayor when K2K came into fruition. I remember commenting to my team how tired and old Kensington and Kingsford looked and they needed to be regenerated. The community deserve better. Now, we know that that's happening and the light rail is here too, to complement what's coming along. But this project isn't all about emotion. It's also about evidence, supermarkets, community activities, medical centres. This will change Kingsford forever. And I think we should give this particular opportunity the green light. We've heard about height restrictions. All they've said is, mate, it's so Australian. We want, we want the same thing. We want equity. We want a fair go. We want what our neighbours have, what the adjacent properties have. Is it wrong to ask? It's not like Oliver Twist saying, please, sir, can I have some more? They're not in that category. They're even though Oliver Twist deserved more as the same way as Souths deserve more, they're saying, sir, can we please have a fair go? Can we please have the same as our neighbours? And not because we're Souths, not because we do so much for the community, not because we respect our indigenous people and do all those wonderful sponsorships. It's because on paper, we've shown that it'll make a difference and we're not compromising any laws or any standards. What we're saying is, give us a fair go. Give us the same opportunity. Let us have, we talked about streetscape, let us not compromise the streetscape, let us have the same as what others have. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I'll now go to councillor Hay, then to councillor Chapel. I'll now go to councillor Hay, then to councillor Chapel.
There's quite a, there's quite a lot of interesting things in this proposal, good and bad. I'm particularly interested in the supermarket, the parking spaces. And also the, the club building is 65 years old. I mean, this is where our residents go to spend a good evening. I've been there on a Friday night, the place is packed. With regard to councillor Veitch's comments, the way we're protecting Anzac Parade was through an amendment I moved to the HIAs, which took out the Kensington HIA, the Kensington North HIA, I should say. What we're doing, I don't like the building heights, but ultimately I believe that Souths juniors are looking at giving back more to the community. And this will, particularly through the supermarket, particularly through new facilities, it will enhance the community and I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Chapel.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I actually found it quite illustrative when the club was talking about how they lobbied for the change of the light rail stop name, because that was meant to be the result of a process of public consultation in which many community members put in submissions. But I do think the power of clubs with government is something that is concerning. To be clear, this height is not what the neighbours have and it is going to significantly overshadow particularly the residential neighbours in this area. I think we could assume probably correctly that the person who put in a submission, one of the very small number of submissions we got on this opposing it, was probably somebody who's going to be directly impacted. And I do think as councillors, we have an obligation to listen to those voices just as much as the voices of the people who run these organisations. I'd note that they're, so they said they extract $35 million a year from our local community. That is out of a revenue, total revenue base of $46 million. So this is basically, the primary function of these clubs is to extract gambling revenue from a financial perspective. And that's an extraordinary amount of money, $35 million. I mean, our total expenditure for council is...
Councillor Chapel, can I interrupt you for a second? Councillor D'Souza.
Mr Mayor, it is not the primary aim of this club to take money from our community. It's wrong. I think that the councillors should take that statement back. It might be one of the aims, but not the primary aim. The word primary has very severe repercussions.
To the point, councillor D'Souza, reflecting their own figures that say $35 million was extracted in pokie revenue out of their total $46 million. Therefore, organisation...
There's another point of order. Thank you from councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton, can I hear the point of order? And I just want to add that I'd like it to be relevant to the code of meeting practice of this point of order. Councillor Hamilton?
Yep. So councillor D'Souza just called a point of order and before the mayor was able to decide on a ruling and pull the meeting back into order, councillor Chapel's begun to debate and argue with councillor D'Souza.
Look, councillor Hamilton is correct. I don't actually believe that councillor D'Souza did have a point of order. I will return to councillor Chapel. Sorry, yes councillor D'Souza?
The code of meeting practice, she's implying something. When you imply something that, you know, it is a point of order. But I respect your experience in this, two years, isn't it? So I'll accept it. But in saying that, to accuse a club after all the good they do, that all their primary aim is to extract money from the community, it's virtually implying they're stealing money from the, they're not. People get entertainment out of doing what they're doing. I'll leave it at that, Mr Mayor, but I'm disappointed if you can't see a point of order there.
Thank you. What I will ask is that councillor Chapel just return to the substance of the motion. Just be conscious of the nature of the debate. So councillor Chapel, if you could please continue.
Thank you. And for clarification, I was not implying, I was saying on their figures, they extract $35 million out of their total $46 million of revenue. The expenditure that they have on community projects is significantly smaller.
I'm sorry, I have to say this point of order, Mr Mayor, because if we're going to talk about extracting and going by the revenue that is in those brochures, you're not actually saying that the club is a non-for-profit organisation and every cent of that goes back into the community. So if you're going to say that we're extracting it, it's not going in a private entity's pockets, it's going back to the community. So you have to finish the whole statement. So if you're going to bring that up as part of the argument, it needs to have an ending and the ending is that that money goes back to the community.
So can I, can I just be clear, just councillors? I understand that there is a view that there is a disappointment with the substance of councillor Chapel's remarks. We, as individuals, may find those remarks unsavoury, but they're not points of order as it relates to the code of meeting practice. I understand that. I've already addressed this. What I would suggest is that councillor Chapel, if you could move on, if you have other points of order, that is fine, but they have to be related to the code of meeting practices. Councillor Chapel, could you please continue?
Thank you. Look, my primary concern here is the impact that pokies have on our local community. If we are giving a gift that is worth tens of millions of dollars, which is what this rezoning would be worth to them, we want to be sure that we're actually able to get something out of it. And I think the first thing we could do is reduce the harm that this club has on our community. There's no way you can extract $35 million from one small area without that having an impact on the many people who have issues with gambling, who, you know, gamble away their week's wages. I think the club could be a responsible corporate citizen. I would like to see that. But I do think we need a commitment from them that they are going to aim to reduce the amount of money that they are taking in that form. And I'd love to see them diversified, but they need to get out the pokies.
Thank you. Are there any further, there's a hand up from councillor Chapel.
Sorry, but...
No, there isn't.
But never mind.
Councillor Olive.
Yeah, I think that it's evident, I mean, just following on from that, that the revenue from Souths juniors is going into expansion. You know, that's evident from this proposal. I think that, you know, sort of the, last week, we looked at the HIAs and we said that the affordable housing component was, should be 10%. Yet my understanding is that the affordable housing component for this development will only be 5%. And so on that basis, that I don't think it's substantial enough, I won't be voting for it.
Thank you. The councillor D'Souza has his hand up with a question. Councillor D'Souza.
Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer, is Souths part of the club grants programme? I have a secondary question after.
Through to the relevant officer.
Oh, sorry. Through you, Mr Mayor. I believe that they are.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza, your follow-up.
Yes, so the club's grants programme for those, I'm sure everyone knows, but more for the public. So clubs, as was pointed out, are non-profit organisations, et cetera. So they actually invest money, they give council, all the clubs in this area, give money to the council to distribute to the needy, Meals on Wheels and other groups. And I know our own Salvation Army gets some funding. But, so, so the point is that this $35 million that we're supposed to extract from the community, like thieves in the night, isn't really going for our, you know, for ourselves to drink and have a good time. If there's money left over after we look after our funds properly, we then reinvest it in the community to programmes like Souths Scare, but also...
I don't think this is a question.
...the council community grant. Thank you, Mr...
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Pandefini.
Yeah, I just would also like to echo that I won't be able to support this rescission motion. I think that you cannot go past that $30 million, $35 million. You cannot sugarcoat gambling and the effect that it has on the community. The research shows that. So we're not really, you know, I don't think that juniors kind of falls into the, to the category of giving someone a fair go when they extract $35 million in gambling. The proof is there. So I just, you know, just sit there, listen to it and hear it. It's a fact. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Pandefini. I would just like to caution all councillors that we are making a planning decision here and that our remarks need to be kept to, need to be kept to the planning considerations of the particular matter. Are there any other speakers?
Just a question.
There's a question.
Is the first vote that you're going to, or first way that you're going to put this matter forward to us is whether or not we support the rescission motion, please?
Correct. Correct. Thank you. Yep, councillor, councillor Sed.
So, Mr Mayor, just want to close the debate and I close it on LEP matters with a couple of questions to the relevant officer. What is the height level or the, in stories of the Scarb and Rainbow Street sites?
Through to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mr Mayor. My understanding is that they're approximately 51 metres. They're subject to the same controls as what is proposed.
Same size. The other question is, the juniors have done the right thing by putting this rezoning in at the time they can go to public consultation and go into the LEP. Can, once the LEP is adopted, can people ask for a rezoning? As councillor Veitch said, it might happen again and other people might ask for a rezoning. Is that possible once an LEP has been adopted?
For you, Mr Mayor. My understanding is they would have to go through the whole planning proposal process and any, that would form part of any future rezoning assessment or application. But they cannot lodge a DA and go to court on that.
So it can't happen in the next four years or until we do the next LEP, yeah?
As I said, that would require a, an application to rezon and to go through this same type of process.
And then my last question is that, to, once this, if it is adopted, and as it says, it has to meet design excellence and as we heard from Mr Kelly, it has to meet design excellence, would part of design excellence be shadowing, obviously the aesthetics, but shadowing, et cetera, all that behind it?
Through to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The design excellence criteria in the LEP encompasses quite a number of matters that would need to be satisfied and it would also require matters to be contained within a development control plan, is my understanding, including overshadowing and impacts environmental sustainability and a number of other matters, as detailed in clause 6.21 of the LEP.
So, Mr Mayor, I'd finish it on that and also like to point out that South Ward councillors lowered the square metre, which means there was more places could be built, which means we can take our fair share of the population, which the state government has imposed on us and there'd be less people that need to move to the West Ward. So we've actually done our bit in helping the LGA spread the numbers. So we've taken our heavy lifting. And on that note, I'll just ask if you can put it...
Thank you. Just for the clarity, it is that the resolution, the name of Veitch Pandefini, with several points, be and is hereby rescinded. So I will now go around.
Well, I have a question. We haven't actually voted on whether or not we support the rescission motion being put.
That's what I'm doing now.
No, being put is different from how we are voting on the actual matter.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now go through in order to rescind the matter.
Mr Mayor, I don't think I mentioned, sorry, I mentioned that if the rescission wins,
Yes.
that I'm moving a motion that we vote, foreshadow that we're moving the motion as per recommendation.
As per the recommendation on the business paper. Thank you. Okay, we will now go to councillor Hamilton. You're voting on the rescission.
For.
Councillor Pandefini.
Against.
Councillor Nielsen.
For.
Councillor Veitch.
Against.
Councillor Hay.
For.
Councillor Luxford.
For.
Councillor Chapel.
Against.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
For.
Councillor Olive.
Against.
Councillor McCafferty. Councillor Wilson. Councillor Sed.
For.
Councillor D'Souza.
For.
The mayor is an abstention. Thank you. I'm an abstention. Thank you. Just there. Number three. No, hit abstention, please. Yep, that's fine. Thank you. I declare the rescission carried.
So now you're going to put it, correct? Now you're going to move it. Someone's going to move it.
Thank you. Councillor Sed. Thank you. I was with councillor Hamilton. Councillor Nielsen. Councillor Sed.
Yep. So, Mr Mayor, I'm putting that, the motion that we pass CP48/22 as per recommendation in the business paper and I will leave that. That we debated this and the second, there was councillor D'Souza.
Councillor Sed, you're complete. Councillor D'Souza?
Reserve my right, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Councillor Sed to close the debate? No. Okay, we'll now put it. Councillor Hamilton.
For.
Councillor Pandefini.
Against.
Councillor Nielsen.
For.
Councillor Veitch.
Against.
Councillor Hay.
For.
Councillor Luxford.
For.
Councillor Chapel.
Against.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
For.
Councillor Olive.
Against.
Councillor McCafferty.
For.
Councillor Wilson. Councillor Sed.
For.
Councillor D'Souza.
For.
And the mayor is an abstention. Thank you. I declare that carried. There being no further business, I call, is there any urgent business? No, there being no urgent business. I close the meeting at 7:58pm. Thank you very much, councillors.
Thank you. Good night.